Joining us for our Clearwater Financial presentation, it's June 17th, 2024. The time is 3:05 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Smatari and Duncan. Commissioner Brooks is excused. And are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment, hearing none. We'll go right ahead with our presentation. And this is Clearwater Financial Capital Improvement and Comprehensive Financial Planning with Cameron Ariel.
Excellent. Good to be with you Commissioners Cameron Ariel. I'm the owner and CEO of Clearwater Financial. We're a municipal advisory firm and we're excited to present to you today on some of the services we provide, but also we thought it would be a great opportunity to give you kind of a trip around the world, so to speak, on some of the current projects that we've been doing to show you firsthand what and how we do our processes. So hopefully that can be of value to the county going forward because we know you're a dynamic county with a lot of needs. And so we look forward to an opportunity to work with you. So I figured I'd just kick off just really briefly about our firm. So Clearwater, we've been around since 2016. Our mission is to help individuals and governments achieve their potential. So we always figure we start with the why. The reason we exist is to help, is to help you all, Commissioners, other staff. Because if we can do a good job doing that, helping you be successful, ultimately that will help the Kootenay County area be successful. And we believe in that. Every member of our firm has experience both in the public, so on your side of the table, elected officials, high-level executive directors of public entities, as well as executive-level experience in the private sector. So we have a unique bridge there that we can build and an understanding of truly what you all deal with and how we can hopefully help. And then the way we do that is through our values. And that's through connection, accountability, respect, and ethics. So obviously, connection is that connection we have with you all as individuals. That relationship really matters to us. It's not a transactional thing. It's a long-term, how do we help Bruce? How do we help Leslie? How do we help the sheriff? How do we help whatever it may be, the fairgrounds, be successful? And that connection really matters to us. Obviously accountability, we do what we say and we say what we do. And so that's kind of the buck stops there. And we want to convey and communicate that accountability so that then our clientele, in this case Kootenay County, can do the same to its constituency. You're responsible for the delivery and quality of service to your constituents. We believe in that as well. And so we do that through upfront accountability. Then respect. The way I'd kind of capture this is we listen. Having been on your side of the table, too many times folks will talk at you, hey, you should do this or that, and you could do this better this way. Our experience has been 80% of the time, the entity, the community knows best. We're just there to maybe help facilitate, maybe add some additional horsepower. Maybe it's a complex project that needs some additional sophistication or lift. And we sprinkle in there some of our experience. But generally speaking, it's just unearthing what already exists in the community and helping it come to life. And so we really respect that. Again, it kind of gets back to that relationship aspect, but truly finding a way, finding consensus, building a collaborative effort that ultimately delivers a community product, whatever that manifestation may be. If it's a, if it's a building of some kind, if it's a plan, it's Kootenay County's plan. It's not the Clearwater plan. It's not Joe Schmo elected official's plan. It's the community's. And that experience generally results in really quality results. And again, drives right back to our mission, which is helping the community be successful. And then with ethics, that kind of leads right into our next slide. So as a municipal advisor, that's a thing. We're registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission. We are regulated by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board to be a fiduciary to our clients. So we have a duty of care and a duty of loyalty to you, in this case, Kootenay County. That duty of loyalty is that we'll act in your best interest. So it's pretty clean cut. Anything that we recommend, any process that we go through is done via recommendation and through your approval in your best interest. And we like that. We like that that's clean, there's no conflict, we're here to represent you. And you'll see that manifested throughout the processes that we'll talk about. But there's just, there's so much power in that where we can say, hey, you know what? It's best to use market competition in selecting this process or this provider. And you can rely on that because that's done in your best interest. And then the duty of care, which is when we propose that we do have an expertise, we actually have it. So we're not going to, gets back to that accountability element, but if we say we can do something, we actually can, and we have that expertise. Or we don't, and we'll say that too, and go find someone that does and use process to find it. So again, we believe wholeheartedly in that as a core value of ours. Here's just a little bit about me. Won't go into this in too much detail, other than, like I mentioned, have a lot of experience in the public sector and also have a lot of experience in the private sector. And I think that that creates a unique bridge that can be very beneficial to you all. The other two principles, I'll brag on them because they're amazing. If you know Jase Perry, he's a CPA. He also ran the state treasurer's government investment pool, local government investment pool. I'm sure the treasurer here in the county knows all about that. Also, was the executive director for the Idaho Bond Bank Authority, which is one of the state-level bond issuing entities. So very, very sharp financial mind and very skilled. Good guy. And then Kristine Stoll, she's, she's been with us about two years now. She was the former executive director for Idaho's 529 College Savings Program. So her bosses were constitutional officers, which she can handle a meeting. She's very skilled with public relations, investment design, ratings, things of that nature. So brings a wealth of experience to our team and is a registered municipal advisor as well. We do have quite a few other employees, but those are the three principals that would be assisting the county in any of its needs. Here are just a few of the services that we do provide and would come under what we would call our municipal advisory services. So you can see here it's kind of multifaceted, but these are generally what we've discovered are the needs of any particular municipality, particularly counties, that they maybe don't have in-house, that maybe oftentimes need additional expertise or that can be useful at some point. And so just to kind of highlight them a little bit, public engagement, we'll talk quite a bit about in this presentation. Development services as well, that often plays a big factor in planning and how to do that well. And then municipal finance. So what we've discovered is a lot of entities are really good at doing plans, but we feel like it's much more powerful when you actually have an implementation plan with that. In other words, how are you going to pay for it? What are the steps that you go through that will help actually see that plan into reality? And again, having been on the public side of the table, nothing frustrated me more than paying a consultant a lot of money to do a plan that then sat on a shelf. Maybe satisfied, you know, some code or whatever, which is important, provided some direction, which is good. But what were those tangible steps? What was the, what was the gas in the tank that actually got the bus down the road? And so we'll talk a lot about that one, that piece of it as well. And then economic development. What are the, what is the cost benefit of doing certain decisions? Should we do X or should we do Y? What is the tax impact to our community? Is this a good idea quantifiably? How do we pay for things? What's the residual value of job creation or amenity creation? So some of those kind of analyses come to play in this as well. This next slide, I think we'll call this a money slide. This is one to remember and also I'll kind of break it down for you. So the top-left quadrant there is planning. And I really appreciated the dialogue around, in the budget discussions around this because, man, you guys are, you're thinking the right way. I mean, it was really cool to hear that, those conversations. Planning is critical, especially in the public sector. Things take time. It takes time for people to get on board, build a consensus. But planning for planning sake and then planning with the community and the future in my, in my view are two different things. And so this could take the form of all kinds of different plans, master plans. That would be kind of like a fairgrounds, if you wanted to do like a property-specific plan. Master facilities plan, which we'll talk about, which can be really valuable. It's basically saying, what is, what is, what are all of our assets? What are the current conditions of it, of our assets? Point in time. Then saying, what are our future needs? And how do we make sure we're planning ahead for those needs? And that, that plays into some of these other things like design and demographics and so on. And then like we've been discussing briefly is the financial planning as well. How do we make sure we're, not only we're putting a good vision forward, a good focus and a direction of our county, we'll call it the road, but are we also building the bus? So who needs to be on the bus? What does the bus look like? And then that financial plan is the gas. How do we make sure that that bus gets moving down the road? And then you get into authorization. This can take different forms. I heard this in the budget discussion as well. Could be bonds, it could be judicial confirmation, but it's whatever process is necessary to fund the needs of the county. Could be budget increases, it could be whatever it may be, impact fees, all those things that could play into this. And so that process, again, is maybe a little more detailed than maybe a broader public engagement campaign. And we'll talk a little bit about that. But yeah, help assisting our clients through that authorization process. And then that naturally flows into finance. So once you get the authorization, how do you ensure that, again, the county's best interests are represented? How are we making sure that we're getting the best deal for the county? And AKA, the lowest tax impact to the citizens as we possibly can? How are we making sure that we're spending that money wisely? And there's a gamut of things we'll talk about there. And then finally, construction. So once we get the funding, helping our clients through a process of selecting a good GC to build the, build the thing, whatever that is. Helping through that entire process of budget, delivery, and ultimately ribbon cutting and everything in between. And then you can see there that it's a, it's a cycle. So needs never go away. I mean, hence the annual budget discussion. And so how does that play into the plan? So now we've gone through a cycle, we've completed, you know, XYZ projects. Well, now we're in the next three projects and we need to add three more into the plan. So that, again, that bus just keeps on going down the road and that that is successful. And the way that it's successful, and again, by design, you can see underpinning all of this is the public. So every phase of this, we're communicating with the public, involving them in the planning process, surveying them, making sure that they understand the needs of the county so that then they can provide their feedback on, okay, how do we prioritize those needs? How do we pay for them? What are we okay paying for? What are we not? And then when you're going into authorization, well, it's not a surprise that there's a bond on the ballot because you've engaged us the whole way and we know what's going into that. And generally speaking, we'll support that because we told you we would back, you know, even before we got to this phase. And then in the financing, making sure that they're, they see a transparent process, that they can understand why the county selected the financier that they did and how quantify the savings that were derived from doing that. And, and again, that's that accountability value. And then through construction. So we planned this, this, whatever it may be. Now making sure we deliver on that, deliver on time and on budget and, and ultimately that it's celebrated in the community. Now we have this asset and let's, let's use it. It's a benefit, it's an amenity. And you can see how over time, as you involve the public in this, you really generate a lot of trust because you're delivering on what you say you're going to do and you're going to, and they see the manifestation of that and they appreciate that level of engagement. And it's a, quite frankly, it's just a really powerful thing over time. You get a lot of trust.
Pardon me for interrupting here, but I do have a question. Can you talk about examples of how you engage the public successfully?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Let's, let's jump ahead a little bit. I'll go to, well, actually, if you're okay with that Commissioner, I'm going to start with the planning piece and then we'll go to some of that public engagement.
Absolutely.
I'll get to your, your question.
Absolutely, thank you.
So if we break it off in chunks, so now we're into planning. So let's say, for the sake of, you know, at least from what we understood from the county already, that there were some, there may be some facility needs and some, some funding needs. And so this is kind of just a quick diagram of maybe how we would go about that process. So we would initiate a project. We would get a catalog of all of the county's assets, assuming you use iCrimp, I don't know, or whoever your insurer is. We would say, give us that list of everything, everything that the county owns. Then we'd say, okay, do a quick initiation kind of review of, okay, what, what assets truly need to be analyzed? I mean, if it's a shed or, you know, a vacant piece of ground, maybe you don't need to analyze, but it just needs to be cataloged. Kind of break that down into maybe, you know, whatever major assets that may be. And it's usually tied to programs, tied to offices, right? So, you know, sheriff's facilities, courts, elections, whatever that may be. And then we go into an analysis phase. We tour those facilities, we analyze them, we do what's called a facility analysis, current conditions report. Basically, we'll come back to the commission and say, in that, at this point in time, this is all of your assets and this is the current condition of them all. And that's from excellent down to bad. Excellent meaning like it's a brand-new building, meets all code, ADA, it's in great shape. You know, publicly designed well for the public, so on and so forth. Employees love the facility. Down to bad, meaning it probably needs to be demoed. It's not safe, so on and so forth. Most county buildings tend to be right in the middle there, good to fair, maybe into poor condition depending. But, and that's, that's, that's typical, that's okay. But that way you know what is, it's, it's, you know, it's the old philosophical adage of know thyself. It's really important to just have in any one spot the current state of things. Then that becomes kind of a basis. And we do, in this as well, we do a public engagement plan and we, we start to ramp up engaging the public in this planning process as well. Having them weigh in on what they think about the assets, what they think about the services and the conditions, so on and so forth. We also overlay that with a demographic report. You can kind of see that that's item seven there. That's super important because you look at a historical of what the trends were in the county. But then we also start to lay the groundwork for this analysis phase of, okay, what's the projected future look like 10, 20, 30, 40 years down the road? That gets us into a really cool analysis of, okay, what do we want this to look like? We're going to grow at some level, you know, unless, unless we do an absolute stop, which is really hard to do. But we're going to grow at, say, 5%. Well, what does that mean in 10, 20 years? What does that mean to our facility needs, space needs, programmatic needs? So let's start planning for that future need now so we're ahead of it. And then we start to test these scenarios. We'll create a citizens committee, pull in some major stakeholders, interview them, get their specific feedback, but then start testing what, what are these solutions? What do they, what's the best configuration and where? And so on and so forth. So that then people can start to at least kind of chew on some solutions. We don't, we don't layer in cost yet. That comes at step 11 here with preliminary costs. But we want to get a good baseline of, okay, what is the best need or best solutions? Then we bring that to you all. You can see there, there's a board presentation where we say, Commissioner, we're to a point in this process where it probably makes sense for you all to weigh in. Give us some direction on what you feel is best. We take that back and then during the recommendation phase, we'll develop a comprehensive financial plan. So we, now we have, we've ran it through the public, we've ran it through the citizens committee, got major stakeholder input, we've gotten board input. Oh, there we go. Now we can say, okay, people are kind of coalescing on scenario B, maybe we'll call it. Now we can say, okay, we can accomplish, you know, projects one, two, and three just with the budget. Maybe it's an annual appropriation, it's something that we can do incrementally. Maybe it's logical to fund it through impact fees, who knows? But we can, we can figure that out. But priorities or projects four, five, and six, they're large capital. It's going to require maybe some intergovernmental work. It's, they're maybe larger in scale projects or we have a funding gap. Those we'll need to bond for. And let's start talking about that. Community, you said you wanted this. We don't have the means currently of paying for that. We're just being, we're just being upfront about it. Do you still want it? It costs X, Y, and Z. Here's maybe some ways that we could skin that cat. Here's a, you know, a capital stack with grants or whatever. But at the end of the day, there's a gap. Are you okay paying for that? Because at the end of the day, someone has to pay for it. And so that, that helps that upfront conversation. And then ultimately, you will know at the end of that, before we get to phase 15, the implementation phase, you'll know exactly what your plan is, how you're going to pay for it, and is the public, and the public will have given you their will as well. So you as decision makers, it helps you a lot. It also helps you avoid a lot of what I would call, again, having experienced this, kind of the back and forth that occurs in annual budgeting. A lot of the back and forth that occurs in turnover in commission or elected officials, call it the shiny, shiny object syndrome. Hey, I really want to do that. Well, that's, that's a really good idea, but we have a plan here that our public approved, that we have a plan for. There's a process maybe for adding that in, but do we really want to go against the will, the process that's already been established? It kind of keeps that, that decision-making really, really coherent and clear. So anyway, so that's kind of a quick process for you for an MFP CFP. I did want to kind of just give you a taste for what this can kind of look like. So this is one we actually just presented to Payette County today, to their Board of County Commissioners. Commissioner Rebi Kelso and, oh, he's the new one, Brooks, I believe is his name. So this is just a part of, we're in, we're past the initiation phase, we're into the analysis phase. This is the reporting of their assets. So on the left, there is their facility analysis assessment and current conditions report. So it's kind of just a snapshot of all those facilities and their current conditions. You can see the ones that are in red on the far right, those need to be demoed, not safe. So represent liability to the county. And then you can see that most of their, their facilities are in good or fair condition. So anyway, that just kind of gives you a snapshot of what that looks like. Another example, this is Madison County. They had a fairgrounds project. Well, I should say, they have a really incredible fairgrounds asset. Right now, it's in the middle of Rexburg. So 10 years ago, this was on the outskirts of Rexburg, kind of in the northwest of the county, kind of north of the airport, if you're familiar there. Well, 10 years happened and now all of a sudden, it's basically right in the middle of the county. You can also see, just kind of interestingly, there's this strange transportation corridor that kind of loops around and brings people around in the, into the fairgrounds area. This is, this is really bad traffic flow. It makes sense for them to do something differently. Basically bust through here and have this be a continuous transportation quarter. It's adjacent to really cool amenities. So right here, you can kind of see this meandering thing here. This is the, the Teton Canal, which is, in certain areas of the town, it's really a cool kind of green belt feel right here. Right here, it's dastardly, it's, it's really ugly through here. And then you have, just north of the property, right up in this area is uh, um, what is that river? I'm forgetting the name of it. Oh, it's, um, is it the Snake River? Can't remember. Anyway, it's a, a major amenity that comes right through there. And so the county is, is, um, we've been assisting the county uh to find a new location for the fairgrounds. Uh, south of town at a new interchange for economic development reasons and for accessibility reasons to uh the greater county area. But then also that would vacate this uh, this site, uh, that arguably is in pretty poor condition, um, for economic development purposes. So assist them uh in putting that out to an RFP for Development Services, getting a, 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 a private developer uh to come and respond uh to that and develop uh, uh, this section of town into, to probably what it needs to be, not a fairgrounds. So, um, that's just an example of, of, of some of those planning activities and economic development activities. So getting to, um, oh, Bruce. Oh, sure. Yeah, so, yeah, Ada County. Um, so Ada County, we've, we've um helped Ada County over the years with a number of different projects. Their fairgrounds uh being one, we just did a, I guess it's been over a year now, but did an analysis of, of their fairgrounds. They are currently uh moving, um, they have a, a really interesting scenario with their fairgrounds. They have a portion of it that is kind of a legacy, it's called Lady Bird Park, um, that is designated um, in a certain way that it basically has to be a park into perpetuity. And so we've helped them um relocate that closer to the river and, um, and then they put that out to a di- kind of like a design contest, if you will, to select a, uh, an architect to develop a, a new um, uh, park project there. Uh, all using ARPA funds. So that was one of their main ARPA projects that they used. Um, and so that's going to, it's already through the plan phase, it's into the development phase and is slated to be uh completed in twenty twenty-five. There's other portions of that site um, that, that we've uh also been working on for economic development purposes as well. We've got a big parking lot that basically stays vacant for long periods of time. They've got the, the Boise Hawks um, uh stadium that's there as well, some, the Expo Idaho, what was the Le Bois uh horse uh track that is now uh unable to be used for that purpose. So they're really starting to look hard at, okay, what could this, what could this be?
It, it was just the park project that I found fascinating, so.
Yeah, uh, I, I would definitely stay tuned on that. We can certainly fold you into that um as it proceeds, but it's a super cool project and will be a, I, I think it'll be transformative to that, not only to the county, but also uh Garden City, uh, the heart of Garden City there on the river. Super, super cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So getting back to, to Bruce's question, um, so here's some of the public engagement stuff that we do. It's hard to kind of capture because we do it at every, in everything that we do, we'll produce at every major step of the process, we'll, we'll be doing a um, a, a press release. And we'll draft that, we'll work through that, we'll kind of detail the, um, the elements of it. That goes to the, to you all, the county, to proof and change and make your own. And then as needed, if, if needed, uh, we can put that out to the media. Um, so that's kind of that earned side. And that takes the form of, you know, print media as well as uh television, uh, sometimes radio as well. If you're familiar with uh the work we did for the Ada County Sheriff's Office, uh, for their jail, um, there was a ton of radio that we did there. There was also some uh blogs that were done, um, there were some texts, um, there were mailings, so physical mailers done. That was a whole multimedia approach uh to that public engagement uh campaign. And then um, here's just an example of some social media that we recently did for uh the city of Caldwell, uh, helped them pass a fire bond, um, uh, got over the, the super majority threshold there and um going to market here in uh a month uh for the financing for those. So that just kind of, um, that gives you a taste. Hopefully, that was a, an answer to your question, Commissioner, but um, super important part of the process and, and we'll, um, you, we, you almost can't overdo it, uh, is our take is, um, we call it the three Cs, you gotta be consistent, concise, and uh clear. And if, if you do that over time, uh, the public is aware and they, and they're engaged. And um, if they need to be involved in a decision, whether it be an election or otherwise, um, they're, they're at least making an informed decision with fact. And so we're, uh, we, we believe wholeheartedly in that and, and have seen the fruit of that. But does that answer your, your question a little bit on that?
A little bit.
A little bit.
Yeah, there's a lot that goes into it. I mean, we could detail um surveys, for example, that we do and um, that, they all kind of take their own life and their own uh shape and depending, again, back to that re- uh respect uh value that we have. Cootney County isn't Ada County or isn't Valley County or, or Madison County. Uh, the approach would be uh unique to, to your constituents and, and their needs and how, how would we uh communicate to them. We do, just a note on surveys, um, we found that it's, they're powerful education tools as well as powerful feedback tools. So if we can distill um complex um processes, for example, or analyses into those surveys to educate the public, that then they can provide their feedback on that, um, it's, it's super informative. I'd, I'd highly recommend you uh, you reach out to, to Mayor, or excuse me, Sheriff Clifford in Ada County with uh the survey that we did for them, uh, uh, leading up to their jail bond. It was uh, it was amazing how accurate uh that detailed uh, uh, information going out, then the feedback to it was to the result of their bond. It, it's just uh, it's super powerful to be able to know what your people think and educate them so they have educated thinking prior to them making a decision. It, it just makes those, that path much, much cleaner, much clearer for the, the decision makers. And I, if, if you guys would like, I could show you, uh, at every, at, in every project, we'll detail the public engagement plan and it ends up being a report at the pl- at the end of the, of the process. So I could send you a, a few examples of those, you could see what went into that. We just completed um, uh, an MFP CFP for Oahuhe County. So Angie Barkle and, and is the clerk down there. I can send you some of the detail or, or Valley Counties was done uh last November and I could send you that one, so. But yeah, just a super important uh part of the process. Okay, so we got from planning to this kind of public engagement piece and now we're down into that, that uh bottom right quadrant, which is the financing. And so in this, as your municipal advisor, we advise you. We make sure you're current uh with what uh interest rates are, are doing. What's the uh best ways to, to issue debt? What's gonna save uh the county the most money? You know, is it going through the bond bank authority? Uh, is it issuing bonds on your own? Does it make sense to go get a bond rating? You know, there's Moody's, Standards and Poor's and Fitch. Do we wanna shop those to, to get uh the best uh cost on that? It's uh putting together the finance team. So who is bond counsel? Uh, do they have uh experience in the type of uh, of bonds that would be issued? Who's the trustee? Who's gonna be the one that pays the bills uh every year uh to all the bondholders? And uh ultimately, who's gonna underwrite the bonds? And so we would help you do that. And here's just kind of an example, uh, we would help you write um, the prospectus or the official statement. So this is a big marketing document on the left, um, that, this is an example that we did for the city of Jerome for sewer water bonds, but um, it's, it's necessary to make sure that bondholders know what it is that they would be potentially buying. And do they, how do they make a good investment decision? So we help prepare that along with bond counsel to make sure that um, the bonds are, are marketed well. And then you can see on the right, we, we wholeheartedly believe in competition wherever possible. To the extent that it's a, a fairly straightforward bond, whether it be backed by property taxes or revenues of some kind of the county, um, those are well-known and would be very sought after, sought, sought after in the market. And so we believe in, in uh bidding that out. And here's just an example from the city of Grangefield. They issued bonds, uh, one for sewer and one for water at the same time. That was a, another financial benefit to, to issue them both at the same time. So it was a, two transactions, but one, one, one issue essentially, uh, that saved them a lot of cost. So instead of doing them separately. But you can see there, uh, the winning bank, uh, all-in cost over the life of the bonds was uh seven hundred and twenty thousand roughly in interest and fees. But you can see here, the, the, the low bid or the worst bid was one point one two five million roughly. So just by using competition in the financing process, uh, we saved the city of Grangefield five hundred and twelve thousand. And it's, it's interesting to note with this that uh, that Bank Ten was their local bank, that they would have likely just gone with. So we, we feel um, this is a very transparent, very, uh, it, it makes our job as your fiduciary very clear. We can be very uh definitive in our recommendation to you all to go with the best bidder and save you money. And therefore, uh, it generates the lowest impact possible to your constituents. And then into construction. So here's just an example of the city of Buell, uh, we're helping them right now with construction of a, uh, and a remodel of an old bank uh into a new police station headquarters. And so we helped them put together the design uh RFP. So who's gonna design the, the facility? Get the best uh price and also uh qualification for that. And then also the construction. We uh did already open bids for that and um, they're in a good spot to, to move forward. And then we help them manage the, the process. So now that they're into construction, here's our budget. How are we doing? Are we on time? So that there's someone uh that's, that's done this before, that's built things and managed uh contractors, helping that be accountable. And then also um, holding them accountable to the design. So making sure that the designer's involved in that, the architect and that it's uh to the quality uh that uh was agreed to. And then um, kind of the ta- the tip, or the tail end of that, of course, is, you know, when you get into ribbon cuttings and ground breakings and helping with that uh event planning. So in this case, you see here, this is um, the Eastern Idaho Regional Solid Waste District. I think you guys are probably familiar, that's like Madison, Teton, Fremont, and Clark Counties came together to, to consolidate their landfill uh, uh, services and enterprises. And uh, and here they are uh breaking ground on that. So we helped invite the governor to that and all the land board members, um, coordinated with uh the US, USDA that was participating in that. And then uh helped in the selection of the, of the, the contractor that, that is now constructing it. Put together a groundbreaking ceremonies, ha- invited the press to that, got the, the gold shovels, you know, all that. So it's a, there's a kind of a, an event, event planning element to that as well, to, to celebrate uh and culminate these things. And then uh, just in conclusion, uh, here's just a few uh folks that we've worked with. They've got uh links to websites that we helped build and videos that we produced that you can kind of check out. That's another element of public engagement. And then uh some quick references for you all. So hopefully that answered your questions, uh, but happy to uh discuss any needs that the county has or how we might uh engage with you all.
Bruce? Do you have any specific projects in mind or is this just an introductory uh presentation?
Appreciate that question, Commissioner. I mean, uh, you know, we've, we've talked with, with you all at, at various conferences and um know that there are definitely needs uh of the county, you're growing like crazy. Uh, we do do work with a number of uh entities in the county, uh, and likely more to come in the near future here. So uh, we're, we're very vested, uh, we're aware of a lot of the needs that are at least simmering out there. And, and hence the, the presentation. We wanted to kind of at least uh highlight some of these things for you all.
So that is a, yes, there is a project or no, there is not a project?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, we could probably uh list quite a few, uh, you know, like uh, you know, courthouse, court facilities, um, fairgrounds, um, there's been a number of them that have been kicked around for a while, so.
Okay, um, cause I'm not aware of any specifically. We have a, we're adding a uh Justice Center expansion project right now. And uh, so we haven't had any specific discussions, at least um, with this board.
No, there, there isn't. I, I asked Cameron to come and present because we started to talk about getting that capital improvement planning piece of it. And I know that they are a full service stop, you know, to bring us from idea all the way to implementation. And so um, there's a lot of stuff that we already do and have done. And so they also offer um, like piecemeal pieces. So for instance, for the Justice Center, you know, it would have been a great idea to have you guys onboard from the beginning to help us with those pieces that we had missed along the way. And same thing with um, any other things that are coming up in the future. We, we have a new facilities director starting next week and that's one of the things that um, I would hope that he would do, would go through all of our uh buildings and everything and, and find out what the needs are. So um, there is no particular project, you know, in uh, in front of us at all because we have to do that piece about what do we need. But what I liked with the project in Ada County with the park, um, was that the, bringing the public along with that engagement piece, you know, brought um consensus and, you know, a lot of support. So that's just kind of where I wanted um them. So they're in the budget at a thousand dollars a month, twelve thousand for a year in order to give guidance at this point. And, you know, saying, you know, I, I learned a ton today um, about kind of the process. And so when we go through, like, we have the Juvenile Justice Center, that is one that's gonna be on our list for major, major upgrades. And so um, I appreciated the fact that, you know, that this process, we could look at what are our options? And I know, uh, you know, a former um juvenile detention director talked And I know, uh, you know, a former, um, juvenile detention director talked about putting a courthouse out, uh, uh, just a courtroom out there. And then we could also move juvenile probation there. So it'd be kind of everything in one, one spot, but there's some challenges to that. So that may not ever come to fruition, but I liked their planning piece and um, I thought that they could kinda help Cootney County at this stage in the game where, like, we already have somebody to go in and look at our facilities and give us an update on, you know, what's gonna need to be put together in the future for those things. So that's all. It just was a basic. I liked kinda what they had to offer and I thought I'd bring them in to, to see if they could help Cootney and any other pieces and actually the bond, I think, the, um, bond for the open space. I think that, uh, if we choose to look at that again, that I would be wanting to, put to, you know, potentially engage Clearwater Services to help us navigate that, um, going forward, so.
To navigate the bond or navigate the communication of the bond, cause that was one of the challenges, is the fact that we couldn't use the public money to advocate for or against.
Correct. We could just educate.
Yeah, and I've, we've had some conversations at conferences and, you know, you're, what you do, I think, is very innovative uh, by trying to think outside the box for a lot of these problems with the county. What was presented to me was that you, you were gonna, um, possibly prepare a master plan for the county. So that's why I kept asking, you know, I'm looking. You gave a very general presentation, but I'm trying to figure out how that links with a master plan. Cause that's what was presented to me as, uh, the basis for the meeting. But the big issue here is the fact that, uh, in Cootney County, from what I can tell, the planning for capital has not been, uh, a priority uh, to levy for that and that growth doesn't pay for itself, as you know, in the state of Idaho. And we've had a bear of a time, just trying to get a single jail bed impact fee passed. And I personally think that there's a lot more, uh, with respect to impact fees that could be levied, uh, for more infrastructure the county government has than just the jail. Obviously, what happened down in Ada County with their administrative building, um, I think they, they've already outgrown that and it's been, what, fifteen, twenty years?
Yeah.
And that's a pretty big building.
That's a big problem for them right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a, that's great feedback. Um, and I appreciate the, the points there, Commissioner. We can definitely, um, uh, what I'll do is I'll follow up with you both and send you some of the, uh, current or more recent MFPs and CFPs that we've done. Uh, cause that'll give you a, a great, uh, snapshot or at least an understanding of, okay, wow, this is, this is what we would be getting and here's the process. Um, and I'll, I'll, uh, also reference, uh, some of the websites, uh, there, cause that's a quick, quick way to get all of that too.
Yeah, and I, I know that you have some innovative ideas with respect to how impact fees can be used so that we don't have to figure out how to spend money that's collected on an eight-year cycle on items that can only be spent on ten-year cycle, uh, items. And so, um, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing your ideas on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I think that's one, um, it's, it's a tool that I think, um, if well-understood by the public, can be super powerful. And it's one where I think too, when it's not, um, it can, it can really set folks back. And so it's one where, uh, there's gotta be a collaborative element. It's gotta be communicated really well. And, uh, particularly with the development community as well, to make sure that they are on the same page, uh, and see the value as well. But yeah, I think, uh, that's, that's a huge opportunity in front of the county as well. So we, yeah, we're happy to provide some additional detail on that as well.
Okay.
You bet.
Well, again, thank you for coming up here.
Yeah, good to be with you both. Appreciate you, uh, letting, letting us be here.
Sure. I'll call for public comment. Okay, all right, uh, three fifty-nine, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.